Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you will please stand for invocation and pledge.
Join us as we pray. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come and do the business of the city of Cartersville once again. Think about this season of Christmas and Hanukkah, as we go into it, we give thanks for the gifts that have been given and the opportunity to give, to also give gifts. And thank you for Christ who was born through Christmas, and thank you for the miracle of Hanukkah. Help us now as we do the business of the city, go before us, give us wisdom, and it's in your holy name we pray.
Join in the pledge.
Pledge to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll please.
Kerry Hoden, Ward 1. Kate Snodgrass, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Rock, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Kelly, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Harper, Ward 5.
Here.
Georgia, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you Ms. Peters, good to have you with us tonight, I'm sure it'll be fantastic note taking for you, we look forward to reading that later on. Speaking of note reading, the first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from December 5th, and council you've had an opportunity to look these over well in advance, and have an opportunity to make any edits to those notes, if there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, we begin with a very special recognition, I'll call on Chief McCann to get us started tonight, sir.
Thank you Mayor and council. Tonight I'd like to recognize two of our officers and one firefighter, and for something to have it on December 2nd, 2024 at 8:00 PM, Officer Jacob Gardner was dispatched to a house fire on Johnson Street. When he arrived, a person's wife told him that her husband was trapped inside the residence. He attempted to go through the front door of the residence, but couldn't get through because of fire and smoke. He eventually went around the house to discover her husband, and I'll refer to him as a victim, stuck between a window air conditioner with smoke and fire coming out of the house. Officer Gardner immediately tore the window unit out of the house, broke the glass, as he was breaking the glass, he cut himself, and was later treated at the hospital for his cuts. But what he noticed was, the victim had what appeared to be an arterial bleed. He had cut himself on the glass trying to get out of the house. So Officer Gardner grabbed the victim, pulled him away from the fire, got him in a safe area, and eventually put a tourniquet on the victim to slow down the bleeding. He did that, and then Officer Gardner and the firefighter started rendering aid to the victim. Once they realized there was going to be a 25-minute wait for the ambulance to arrive, they made the decision to throw him in Dario Alfonso's police car with the firefighter in the backseat to transport him to Cartersville, or Piedmont, Cartersville, and basically saved his life. So I would like to ask Mayor Santini to present our lifesaving award, which is the highest award that we give to any officer, and I'd like for you to present it to him, and Officer Gardner. And Alfonso, please come forward.
I am not worthy, but I will certainly be honored to do this.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for your support, I appreciate you so much, thank you. Mayor, I'd like to add one other thing, can the officers on B ship please stand?
That's not the ones that are active now, right?
No.
Okay.
So these guys over the last few years have received more awards, last two years, one of our officers, Lieutenant Logue, Dario Alfonso, and...
Foster.
Foster. Sorry. Received Officer of the Year for Northwest Georgia, I mean, which is pretty impressive. It's impressive because these guys all feed off each other, we've got senior people on that shift, and it's really impressive. And as a matter of fact, the guy that does the program where they give the Officer of the Year has been crying all year long saying, "We need to help them," because they've given awards to the Cartersville Police Department the last two years, "So we need to help them fundraise." So I mean, I'd like to give them a applause too.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if y'all are going to stay for the rest of the meeting? There's, I will say, there's plenty of pizza up here if y'all want to grab a slice on the way out the door. If not, thank y'all very much. I was gonna, I was gonna let y'all do that, but Chief said no. Sorry about that. Mr. Hardegry, it is your job to follow that up, good luck. Z24-08, please.
No sense in feeling pressured after that, because we can't run with that, no. First item, Z24-08, this is for a rezoning of about 80 acres on Center Road. The applicant, after the planning commission meeting, has since requested that this application be tabled while he do some more due diligence that he'd like to present to you, and also meet with Councilman Hodge when she's available, which we know at this point will not be till after the 1st of the year. So with that, we'll also have to re-advertise, assuming council would accept the recommendation to table this from the applicant, we will re-advertise once we know what those dates would be for the city council meeting.
Okay, thank you, any questions for David at this point? Thank you, so I'll reiterate, in the event there's anybody here that was showing up to speak on that, in a moment I will open up a public hearing relative to that case, however, remember that it's very likely that council will table this, and the whole thing will go back through the process again, so any comments you make tonight really wouldn't benefit anything, for that matter. So, that being said, I'll open up a public hearing for Z24-08, ask anybody who wishes to step forward and speak on this topic, for or against to do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for Z24-08, and I know council you have the option before you to take no action at all, or a motion to table would be in order.
Make a motion to table Center Road.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously, that item is tabled too, and Mr. Lovell, it's my understanding, we don't have to set a specific date for that, this will all be re-advertized and resubmitted?
That is correct.
Will it go through the planning commission again?
Not necessarily. The applicant may decide to do that, but they can just, since y'all have tabled it, come directly back to council.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, the discussion at this point has been, they would not want to go back to planning commission to keep things moving forward, but if council decided that was the best course of action after receiving whatever due diligence documents they're preparing for you, then you have that option.
Okay, thank you.
I would think so.
Go ahead.
It's quite a heated discussion, but if they made changes to it, I would think that would be a right to plan commission, all right, or not?
It's our option.
Yeah, your option, depends on, I guess, how extensive the changes might be.
And, you know, if you, you know, if y'all did want to just have it go through the whole process again, you know, you could, as part of your tabling motion, you could amend that and say that we would prefer to go back to planning commission first before it comes back to council.
Would you like to amend that motion to include that?
I'll make the amendment. I'd like to amend the motion.
Would you second the amendment of that motion?
Second.
All in favor of that amendment to that motion, please say aye?
Aye.
There you go. Thank you. Mr. Hardegry, you'll move us on to AZ24-05.
Yes sir, Mr. Mayor, this is for two properties located east of Fiber Drive along Highway 113, applicant is Rushock Properties LLC. We'll say that all, that the properties have been posted, and the notice has been properly advertised, there doesn't appear to be any conflicts of interest with the council. So these two properties along Highway 113 are currently owned by the same applicant, Rushock Properties LLC, which represents HEATCO, it's one of the owners of HEATCO. HEATCO is expanding their operation, or wishes to expand their operations. By acquiring this property, it would give them the ability to construct a 30,000 square foot warehouse on those two properties. Currently, in the county, the zoning for those two properties is A1, they're about 2.7 acres total for that. There is, the next item, we'll get into that after this one, is for a third property to go along with these two. Planning commission did review this, they did vote 4-0 in favor of it, with the condition that fences, or fence and buffer be installed along the perimeter of this to protect the interests of the townhome owners, and also the residents in the county just to the south, I guess we could call it the Charlie Waits property. Mr. Waits was present at the hearing for planning commission, he did make comments regarding some stormwater issues, and may make those same comments here tonight. Planning commission did approve it with the condition that fences and/or buffers be installed, that is something that is part of the development regs and the site plan review process, and we'll cover that if we get to that point with this rezoning, or annexation and rezoning. The current zoning is A1, the requested zoning is light industrial, which is a down zoning from the current HEATCO zoning, which is heavy industrial.
Okay, any questions for David at this time? Thank you. We'll have two public hearings, the first one is relative to the zoning of Z24-05, whoever has their phone not silenced, I would appreciate if you would do so. So this is the zoning portion, the movement from the, it's gonna be a dollar fine next time, zoning from county agricultural to city light industrial. So relative to that, I'll open up a public hearing for that portion of the request, anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for the zoning portion of AZ24-05. And now I will open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of AZ24-05, and again, ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the annexation public hearing for AZ24-05. This is the first reading, we'll take this up at our first council meeting in January, which is on the...
Second.
Thank you. So we will move on from there to an adjacent request, zoning case 24-09.
That's correct, this is for roughly a half acre sized lot to the south of those two properties we just reviewed. This lot is in the city, it's on R20, it's also recently purchased by the applicant, Rushock Properties LLC, for the HEATCO expansion, with the current zoning of R20, they're also requesting it be rezoned to light industrial, again, that's a down zoning from the current HI zoning of the HEATCO property. Planning commission did approve this with the condition that we incorporate fence and buffers around the perimeter to protect the resident of the Waits family there to the south. And again, you know, it was discussed, the stormwater issues with Mr. Waits' property, but that is something that we would address during the plan review process.
Okay, thank you, any questions for Mr. Hardegry on this item? Thank you sir, open up a public hearing for Z24-09, and again, ask anybody wishing to speak for or against to step forward and do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for Z24-09, and again, council will take this up for another public hearing and consideration at our meeting on January the 2nd. We're keeping you busy tonight, David, we'll move on to AZ24-06.
Yes sir, Mr. Mayor, this is for 35 Indian Trail Southeast, the applicant Savior of All Lutheran Church, this is their property, it's about six and a half acres, it's an island, unincorporated island within the city limits, and several years ago, there was a movement within the city to close down some of these islands, make them smaller, bring these properties into the city. At the time, the church was not interested, but since then, things have changed, they are interested in being in the city limits now, they feel they're part of the city. They did have one incident with a emergency services call that took extra long, or took the extra time to come out, they'd like to avoid that, and hopefully, being in the city, they would, they would have that benefit. Planning commission did review this, staff recommended an R20 zoning associated with the annexation, planning commission recommended an agricultural zoning, which is currently the zoning that it has in the county. Nothing has changed there, I think the applicants are here this evening to represent the application and address council, and I think their position is the same, that it come in as an R20 if the annexation is approved. I think that's all there is for this.
Given that the use is going to be the use, does it really make any material difference what it comes in as?
It could come in as AG, the church meets the minimum requirements for that, there's acreage requirements for AG, and the church meets that requirement. The R20 zoning is typically our default zoning, if there's not another adjacent zoning to orient, a new zoning to. There is R20 zoning already in place with the adjacent neighborhood and homes just to the north here, so there is logic behind bringing it in as R20, probably more logic than leaving it as AG.
Okay, thank you. I will open up a public hearing for AZ24-06, and once again, this is going to be the zoning hearing of the request, so relative to that zoning that I just asked of Mr. Hardegry, this is the public hearing for the zoning, and I'll ask anyone wishing to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time. Sure, make yourself comfortable, and when you do, your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Jane Millich, M.I.L.I.C.H., 4067 Cottage Oaks Drive, Acworth, 30, oops, 0101. I'm here as a representative, as a board member of Savior of All Lutheran Church, and we are asking to be incorporated, and to be incorporated as R20 and zoning.
Okay.
We have no plans to sell the property, develop the property anymore, build on the property, as far into the future as we can see, this is our church home, and we are a part of this city with our church home there. The R20 is to follow with the neighborhood, and because 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now, I can't see that far into the future, but I want the future of the congregation to have that available to it.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Thank you. Continue the public hearing for AZ, the zoning portion of AZ24-06, anyone else wishing to speak may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the zoning portion of the hearing, and I'll open up the annexation portion of AZ24-06 for a public hearing, please know that any comments made during the zoning portion will be transferred into the annexation one, so don't feel like you need to get up and do that and say the same thing, if you have something different relative to that, you're certainly welcome to. Anybody wishing to get up and speak on this topic may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the annexation public hearing for AZ24-06, we'll take this up for consideration after another series of public hearings on January the 2nd. Mr. Hardegry, on to SU24-04.
Yes, this is an accompanying special use permit application for Savior of All Lutheran Church, 35 Industrial Trail Southeast. With all religious institutions or new religious institutions within the city that make an application for a license, or in this case, annexation or zoning, we require a special use permit go with that. This special use permit would make the church legal for all city requirements. No changes since planning commission, and the planning commission did recommend approval of this special use for the church.
Okay, thank you for that, any questions for David at this point? I guess not, I'll open up a public hearing for SU24-06, and ask anybody wishing to speak for it or against it to step forward at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU24-04, and we'll take this up for, again, for another public hearing and vote on January the 2nd. David, you're going to get to relax, maybe grab a piece of pizza after this one, T24-05.
I'll be feeling that for days if I did. T24-05, this is a text amendment application to allow a hookah lounge, or hookah bar, and initially with cigar lounges, within the multiple use zoning district. Currently, there is no allowed use for what's being proposed, specifically the applicant, which is Gishri Chamunda LLC, they own the Cartersville Village Shopping Center, which is the shopping center at 212 South Tennessee Street. It's a multi-tenant shopping center, he has a current tenant in there that would like to provide a hookah lounge and the food and drink services that are associated with that, at that location, but this text amendment is to just allow the use there. Within the packet of information provided on this, we've included examples from other jurisdictions we found, with language relative to how they've handled hookah lounges in their jurisdiction, and really, it's kind of all over the place as to what that community wanted to achieve and do with their ordinance, so we'll leave that up to council if there's anything specific you want to do with this. There's also a state law, Clean Air Act, that was enacted in 2005, that falls under the purview of the Department of Health, they would be the ones enforcing any kind of air conditioning, air handling requirements for a hookah lounge or cigar bar. After the planning commission and conversations with the applicant, we focused the effort on the hookah lounge, because that's really where the applicant and the tenant wanted to focus the effort there. So we haven't provided definitions, we know that going forward, if this were approved in the MU district, there would be a need to update the zoning definitions to include references to hookah, and maybe a smoking lounge, or different things like that, so that we have a clear delineation as to what we're working with. But the applicant is here this evening to answer questions, I'm not the one, the hookah expert, to answer any questions specifically to that, but I will allow the applicant to answer those questions that you may have.
Thank you.
And I should say that planning commission did recommend a denial on this application.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, just a note for the record, this is a applicant text amendment, not a staff one.
Right, and so we'll have a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
I'll open up a public hearing for T24-05, if the applicant would like to come forward and speak to this, to start us off, be more than happy to hear those comments. Good evening to you.
Good evening.
And again, if, for our clerk, your name and your address, please.
My name is Sunny Gangwell, my spelling is S-U-N-N-Y, and the property address is 138 240 South Tennessee Street, Cartersville, Georgia, 30120.
Thank you.
So about our business, the tenant is basically trying to open a hookah lounge for the last six months, and I had many applicants talking about wanting to do this business. And me and my mother and my father, we own this property, and I manage this property from my parents. We bought this in 2018, we did a lot of significant work, we seen, we have a lot of diverse businesses in the property right now, but the issue is that we just don't want to bring the same kind of businesses in our property. So what we're trying to do is bring the hookah, the hookah is basically our vision for these businesses, to create premium lifestyle destination that seamlessly combines a relaxing with explanation food and beverage services. By offering created selection of hookah, diverse menu, we aim to provide a welcoming space for individuals that can unwind, socialize, and enjoy quality leisure time. So basically, my goal is that we're not just trying to focus on just hookah, we want to include the food and the alcohol ordinance in the whole package, so that we don't just focus on the tobacco part, but we have both of those two elements included. So the main thing is with the hookah is that, I know the health department has regulations that we have to follow with the Smoke Act, which is the ventilation system, and that's our first priority, because we have other businesses that are going to be impacted with the smell. So we have put that in place, because whenever we lease a building, we're following the city of Cartersville regulations with the ventilation system, making sure the health department, with the food, with the three compartment thing, and everything in place. So we will follow those guidelines. The age group that can only come in here is 21 and up, so we won't have anyone under that age, because that's not allowed, so they will have to present an ID, and basically, they will only be able to come in there. And another thing is that we don't have these kind of businesses in our jurisdiction, like everybody has to go outside of our vicinity to go to those kind of businesses. So we wanted to implement that, so that people can come to see our vision of what we're looking for. Also, as I said before, like, the ratio, I can talk about the ratio too, like, we can make it proportion where the food, the alcohol, and the hookah, we can work on that, because we see that we have a cigar lounge in downtown district as of currently, and I know they don't have a food element in place, so we're willing to put that, so it's not like we're having both balances, just hookah and alcohol. So we wanted to put that in place in the ordinance. Yes, so, and hookah is something that, it's a water pipe used to smoke tobacco, so it's same as a cigar, cigar, so it's not like different, it's the same, but it's inhaled differently, because it's a water pipe that is produced by heating tobacco charcoal, it's passing through water, inhaling through a mouthpiece. So basically, it's made out of shush, which is a type of flavored tobacco, so it has a different type of flavors, so that's what the hookah element is about. So other, the other thing is that the, enhancing the neighborhood appeal, so the establishment will serve a social hub for the community, caring to individuals who appreciate refined experiences by combining the ambience of the casual vibe of hookah. So why do we want to have this approved, is we aim to uphold the highest standards of service, hygiene, customers' experience, ensuring that lounge becomes a cherished local destination. The project will generate, another thing is that the project will generate employment opportunities and stimulate local economic growth through collaborations with nearby suppliers and vendors. So our conclusion is, hookah is more than just a business, it is a lifestyle enhancement for the community. By offering a unique blend of relaxation, social interaction, culinary delight, we inspire to create a space that has... inspire to create a space that adds value to the lives of the neighborhood residents. We kindly request your approval to bring this vision to life to allow us to contribute positivity to the neighborhood's vibrance and growth.
Thank you. I have a question. The, I don't know which parcel in your shopping center that you're intending this to be in. Does it have a grease trap already or would you be putting one in?
We will have to put that as a health department requirement. I know, so we had few businesses, you know, in the past, they allowed to put the grease trap inside the facility, but they don't allow that anymore. So we will have it outside. So it'll be like the minimum requirement is 1,500 gallons.
Okay. Thank you.
Just curious, how big, how extensive is your food menu going to be?
Uh, I, I believe it will be to a point like probably 30 or 40% of the business will have food. Because a lot of people, when you look at it, like, let's say there's two, like, three of your friends go to this facility, right? Two of them don't really want to do the hookah. So you want to have a vast varieties of the food menu so that the business can survive. Like, you don't want to just keep the hookah and then not have the food. So we want to keep that percentage a little bit higher. And it will be like a more of an open concept, so it's not like we're going to have separate rooms in place. Because it's 21 and up, so it has to be an open space. But that whole, that whole space will have a ventilation system in place, so it doesn't like enclose and go into the next door neighbor.
And I guess the ventilation, there's nearby residential, I guess right behind your place, the...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so when it gets ventilated and it gets blown out, it gets blown out to where? Because you mentioned the smell. Evidently, there's a, I guess the smell of this flavored tobacco is...
Yeah, so I believe the ventilation system, what happens is that it circulates into the air ducts that we put. There's like a special type of product that we have to put that is specifically for the hookah. So like, there's a way that you can cap it where like, as it goes out, it's not as excessive. It goes as limited proportion. So it's not like, you know how like you have a kitchen hood and like the big hoods that they put in a restaurant, like everything going out in one flame? It won't be like that. It's a special type of ventilation that we have to put in.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Question. So is it, so a lot of some hookah lounges do not allow alcohol and food, correct? Some of them prohibit alcohol and food being served. So why do you think, I mean, like several of them that are established prohibit, several jurisdictions, some jurisdictions prohibit alcohol and food being served in a hookah lounge? So what, what is your, why would yours be different than what establishments may have?
Uh, I feel like, I know what you're saying, like, that's a point that you're coming across where like different jurisdictions don't have that, like, food and alcohol. I feel like businesses don't survive just on like hookah. It just won't last long. I haven't seen any business, even like with my tenants who have been in that business so long, they just, they just can't survive just on tobacco. It's just that it doesn't drive the business, it doesn't grow because they feel like it's just hookah and it's, it doesn't have, they have to have the drinks with it, like, to kind of feel the vibe. Like, they don't, they want to have that in place. So I feel like with those two components, it really increases their business. Because there, as I said before, like, three, if three members go and there's just hookah, the other two friends are not going to go. It's just, it just doesn't work.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We are continuing with the public hearing for the text amendment T 24-05. If anybody else wishes to step forward and speak for, against, now's the time to do so. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T 24-05. We'll take this up for another public hearing and final consideration at our meeting on January the 2nd. Now we get to the part that I like to call the speed round. Randy, get us started.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed purchase, as you're aware or should be aware. Playing and Development Department have been looking for software solutions to replace their current software needs. There's been discussion about trying to get online license renewals for the past several years. We've been unable to accommodate that with our current City View software. Customer service has been difficult to deal with. With that, we've come up with a product called OpenGov. We've interviewed them, met with them, looked at how their operations work with our operations, and it seems to meet the needs of our licensing permitting, code enforcement departments and divisions. With that, we're recommending your approval of this particular software.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Just Mayor and Council.
Yes.
If you make the motion, I would recommend Keith, I've been going back and forth on OpenGov, but final approval is up to the city manager, city attorney, agreement on the contract. We're getting close, but just want to include that in language.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll make a motion to approve OpenGov pursuant to the review of the city manager and city attorney.
Second.
On favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Councilman, Mayor Protem Cooley will be handling the next item as I'll be recusing.
Move right along. Logically proceed.
Yes, sir. So this is requesting approval to award the bid for the production of the city's 175th anniversary commemorative book to McStatz Printing. This will include printing and binding of 1,000 copies of the eight and a half by 11 Perfect Bound book. It is 60 pages interior. The total cost for the print and binding services equals $9,245.60.
Discussion? If not, does the motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
On your favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
And pass will please note for the record, the mayor did recuse himself on that item.
Go ahead, get started.
Proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem and Council and Mr. Mayor somewhere. So we, the next item is the various storm sewer repairs. Stormwater Department, Division of Public Works has identified several segments throughout the city that are in need of repair by means of curative placed pipe or spin casting. On December 5th, we opened up bids from four contractors. The overall low bidder of this project for repair was Inliner Solutions from Stone Mountain, Georgia, at a price of $442,125. Our design engineers have reviewed the contracts and reviewed, their recommendations are to issue a notice of award and enter contract with this low bidder. Public Works will utilize American Rescue Plan Act for this project to qualify for these funds. We feel that this project would help our stormwater divisions manage, reduce, and recapture stormwater at these locations. Therefore, this project will meet the requirements and eligibility for the ARPA funding. We are also requesting the ability to approve an additional stormwater improvement related to stormpipe found outside these locations in the original scope, and this could result into up to a $50,000 change order. We're recommending accepting the bid from Inliner Solutions and allowing an additional amount of work not to exceed $492,125.
Okay, we have discussed this in work session. Are there any more comments? And if not, does the motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Second. On your favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you. All right. Yes, our next item is, these are two ARPA projects we're working on. One is the Fight Herring Street Stormwater Improvements. The other one is a Edwali Street Park, Pocket Park and Stormwater Management Facility. Both of these are ARPA projects that are in final design now. They are not completed in design yet, but there is a material list and in order to meet the deadline for ARPA funding, we would like to go ahead and purchase some of the hard equipment. We are actually most likely going to be doing this work in-house with our, our staff, but we do need the materials to go ahead and purchase it now. We reached out to a couple proprietary vendors and got quotes from them, and they are as follows. Vulcan Materials for stone, which is going to be GAB as well as 57 stone, at a price of $32,351.50. Advanced draining systems at a price of $132,968.77 is for the Storm Tech Underground System and the HP Storm Pipe. Public Works, once again, will utilize the American Rescue Plan Act for this project, the funding for it, and they will call, these projects qualify the funds by helping the stormwater division manage, reduce, and recapture stormwater at these locations and therefore eligible for ARPA funding. We recommend accepting quotes from Vulcan Materials and advanced drainage systems for a total amount not to exceed $165,320.27.
Discussions? If not, does the motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
On your favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Next item, Mr. Mayor Protem, is the firefighter cancer insurance policy renewal. This is our annual renewal that we have coverage for our firefighters. It's required by state legislation. I recommend this for your approval.
Discussion? If not, a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On your favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Next item is the PTSD coverage. It's a new piece of legislation that goes into effect January 1st, and we have to require coverage for our police and fire personnel. We have looked at a couple different options, and the GMA proposal was our best proposal for 2025, and I recommend this coverage for your approval.
Discussion? If not, a motion on the floor.
Motion approved.
Second.
On your favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Item number 15, water treatment plant expansion construction.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. The first item is this water treatment plant expansion construction for Phase 1 of the water treatment plant due to the increased demands and increased future demands on the treatment plant. We accepted the, the single bid for this, the pre-qualified bid from Ruby Collins Incorporated for $74,643,598. Additionally, there is a change order request that we have for a reduction of that cost by $2,256,995, bringing the total project cost of $72,386,603 cent, or $603.0 cents. As well, if there are remaining ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds, we would like to use those to fund this expansion as well. And we feel that this, this project will increase the efficiency of the water treatment plant capacity, thus reduce the demand for publicly owned treatment works through conservation, efficiency, and reuse. I would like to recommend awarding this contractor, Ruby Collins, for the initial bid award amount and also approve the change order, reducing that amount to a cost of $72,386,603.
Thank you. Say that number again.
My eyes are crossing. I'm sorry.
It's all right. Yeah, and again, I mentioned in the work session, that number for people hearing that the first time gasp at it a little bit, but obviously, this has been something, we didn't just decide this over the last couple days or weeks or even months, so.
Yes, sir.
It's a requirement at a number of different levels, and the funding is in place to handle this, and it's part of making sure that we ensure that we have water capacity for everybody's needs and we're providing a quality water product more important than anything else.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate your, your work and leadership on this.
That is, just for your information, $10 per gallon of capacity, which we do not charge a capacity fee in that amount. So you can see the capacity fees are merely a subsidy to the actual cost of capacity for construction.
Thank you. Any questions for Sydney on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Sydney.
Yes, sir. This is the Water Pollution Control Plant Office Technology Updates. The Water Pollution Control Plant Staff is moving into the, what used to be the Distribution and Collection Office. And the, the fibercom equipment in that office is outdated and no longer supported, requesting $23,540.62 to Telnet Systems to update and upgrade the, the existing data drops, access control, and camera systems for that office.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Sydney?
Yes, sir. This is a request for CTI Engineering Services to design improvements to portions of Pennson Drive, Patterson Drive, and Cut Off Road, approximately 3,200 feet of two-inch diameter water mains supplying water to those areas, obviously with no fire hydrants on any of those. This is, this also would, we feel, would qualify for American Rescue Plan Act funds. This reduces the demand for publicly owned treatment works capacity through water conservation, efficiency, and reuse. Recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last item for you.
Yes, sir. These are two easements necessary for our west side feeder main along Nancy Creek area. Both permanent and temporary construction easements for these two parcels totaling, well, not totaling, $29,700 for one and $13,000 for the second one is approximately three acres, I believe, is quite a substantial amount of area that they have agreed to.
Great. Thank you. Any discussion on this? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovell, before you start, let me ask Council for a motion to add three items to the agenda.
Motion to add three items to the agenda.
Second.
On favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Three items added. Please start us, Mr. Lovell, with Arcadia Sewer Line Easement.
Mayor, this is our standard sewer, sewer line easement for the new Arcadia development on the other side of 75 and Main Street. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have some, a second reading of an ordinance relative to probation requirements.
Yes, Mayor, this is clearing up some conflicting sections in the existing ordinance, and it is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Good evening, Mr. Morgan.
Good evening, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council. The first item we have is the New World Tyler Technologies Maintenance Cost for Calendar Year 2024 is $46,358.78. It is our layout for our police and fire on that, from invoice from Barter County. Excuse me.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is the third quarter Motorola radio invoice that we utilize, police, fire, and a couple of the utilities also utilize. It is also from Barter County in the amount of $42,803.20. We're requesting approval to pay that invoice.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Freddie. Actually, you have the one added item, so you had, let's go to that added item number one, if you would please share that with us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We're asking for approval to move forward with a masonry ceiling on the brick at the Barter History Museum in the amount of $13,000, excuse me, in the amount of $13,290. This will help preserve that brick, and we'll have to do that over time as we move forward. But it's to pressure spray that and also seal that brick and allow it, provide a protection for it so that it doesn't continue to crumble or have any other issues.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Back to you, Mr. Lovell, for Sploß election results.
Yes, Mayor, as y'all know, in the recent Sploß election, the city left in the flexibility to do a bond on the Sploß funds in case y'all wanted to do any of the work early before the money came in. And part of that process is you actually have to certify the election results, and that's what this resolution does. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions? Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Archer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, Parks and Recreation is seeking approval of the Cartersville Primary Gym Usage Agreement between the city school system and the city of Cartersville. This agreement grants the city use of, of the gym for, uh, the purpose of holding youth basketball practices and games, as referenced in the letter and facility rental, uh, application subsequently presented and approved at the city school board meeting on Monday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, Parks and Recreation is recommending approval.
Thank you for that. Any questions for David on this item? If not, Chair Luntan a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Mr. Lovell, back to you.
Yes, Mayor, um, we recently had a, um, a tree contractor doing some work at, uh, Deluge Park. They, uh, damaged a light pole that fell and, um, did some damage to our facility there and the roof, and they would like to have their contractor, um, repair that, which the city has used them in the past, and we don't have any great objections to that. I would ask that Council authorize giving them a right of entry to allow them to go on the property and do that, and, and deny us from any of the work they did.
Okay. Any other, does any, just straightforward motion, or is there any?
Straightforward motion's all you need to do.
Okay. Thank you. Chair Luntan a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Keith, you've got a couple of other items, uh, that are under resolutions, item twenty-five and twenty-six.
Yes, I, yes, Mayor. Um, these are both deal with any light and notices the city has received. Um, the first one was from Avalon Highlands Apartments. Um, staff is recommending that y'all deny that one at this time, and would like a motion indicating you do so.
Uh, we'll open the floor for a motion of that nature, or any other nature, for that matter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
The next one is, uh, with respect to Crown Inn. Y'all did also receive, uh, any light and notice there. It is also recommended by staff for y'all to deny.
Thank you for that. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That last added item, Mr. Porta?
Yes, this is with Travelers Insurance, our insurance company for property and casualty. We had a, a police officer involved in an accident back in April, um, received a deductible invoice of about twenty-two thousand, some change. Our rec, it's gonna probably hit our twenty-five thousand dollar deductible, so I'm recommending approval to pay travelers for any deductible costs for this insurance claim up to the twenty-five thousand dollar limit.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Never before has the statement, "We save the best for last," been so true. Thank you. Tom, good evening to you, sir. We look forward to the finance report.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we'll be looking at the October twenty-twenty-four numbers and comparing to October twenty-twenty-three numbers. The general fund revenues increased over last year by nine hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Expenses increased by four point seven million dollars. Area insurance revenue I look at on a monthly basis, local office and sales tax have a decrease there of about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and billing and permits and inspection fees have a decrease there of about four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. The water and sewer fund revenues increased over last year by one point one million dollars. Expenses increased by one point three million dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. And the gas fund revenues decreased over last year by one, I'm sorry, sixty-two thousand dollars. Expenses increased by six hundred and five thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase gas, decreased capital expenses, increased debt service expenses, and increases to the transfer to the general fund. And the electric fund revenues increased over last year by two million dollars. Expenses decreased by one point, I'm sorry, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase of electricity, and increased capital expenditures. And the stormwater fund revenues decreased over last year by twenty-two thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by seventy-three thousand dollars due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. And the solid waste fund revenues decreased over last year by a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, while the expenses decreased by ninety-one thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. Finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last year by a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Expenses increased by three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And our cash position for the month of October, unrestricted funds decreased, and also restricted funds decreased. Sploesd account of, of balances, Sploesd two thousand and fourteen, account balance two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. Sploesd twenty-twenty account, fourteen million, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, five seventy-four, fifty-nine.
Thank you. Comments?
Uh, again, we're doing very well financially, even though general fund, as I remind you, is in the deficit. That is due to the new fire station and work on City Hall and the new rec center. Uh, actually, this month, we did take ownership of the C O for new fire station. We'll have open house, uh, sometime in January with that. But, uh, as a reminder, we needed to get money last year to, from the industrial park sales. That helped us help pay for that new fire station and part of the new buildings. So, but, uh, overall, Tom, appreciate the work, and, um, fairly soon, you'll be seeing, uh, audit, cause the auditor did get Tom the, the draft audit earlier than expected, so.
We hope.
Wow. That's actually when it's supposed to be, isn't it?
Yes, exactly.
Kinda.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else from Council? Any other business needs come for Council tonight?
Yeah, I got one. How you doing today? My name's Jason Trainer. I live at eighteen Burke Hickory Connector Southwest. Um, I will make it very brief. I looked at an article, and it says statewide, nine hundred, or six hundred and nine people that were sober drivers that did not drink were arrested here in Georgia.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the article that you just referenced says in Tennessee. We were in Georgia.
Right, statewide.
Statewide in Tennessee?
One person says I, I could have cried right now because, thinking about it, sober drivers being arrested for D W I statewide. So whether it's in Tennessee, that kind of, uh, abuse going on from any police department, I believe needs to stop. Because innocent people, um, are going to jail for not driving. Second state of business is the drones. My question is, there's been drones flying over here in Georgia? Are they government drones? What is their purpose? And there was a story about a shipping container radioactive material that was missing here in the USA. So Mayor, what are these drones doing? Are they government drones looking for that radioactive material that was missing? Or there's another purpose for these, uh, drones here in Georgia? Do you have any answers?
Well, I've got a lot of questions, but I don't know how that answer, what, that has to do, anything to do with the city of Cartersville government, and this is a business meeting for the city of Cartersville.
Well, what do you know? Are they government drones? Cause they, they were flying here in Georgia over the skies, and many other states, and the federal government's not telling us anything. It's a very serious matter, because radioactive material was missing. Are they looking for it? Are they spying on the American people as a police state? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business needs come for Council this evening? Reminder that Council, that, um, excuse me, that city offices will be closed on
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. Again, if those are your garbage days, uh, just put it out on Thursday, leaving out towards, also, New Year. We begin Hanukkah on, uh, December twenty-fifth as well. And, um, I do want to take just a second and thank all of y'all. It's been a fantastic year for the city of Cartersville. I'll thank every single employee, uh, and member of the community, uh, for making this a wonderful place to be, and, uh, wish everybody a happy, safe, and healthy, uh, holiday season. Uh, that... Chair Luntan a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Thank you, Jase.